I'd say let's get the show on the road here. Commissioner Jackson, I think you have opening, don't you?
I sure do, and I am honored to invite Elder Gannon Williams to the podium. If you would, come on up to the podium, and you'll do an invocation for us. And Elder Williams is with the Greater Miracle Temple Holiness Church, and we're excited that they have got a brand-new rebuild, and we're excited to have him out here today for our invocation. If you would stand.
As looking to the Lord. Great God of our salvation, we thank you for bringing us together on this blessed day, for this occasion. We ask for, God, for every member involved concerning our county commissioners and senior-ranking member, oh God, that all things be done decent and in order to the satisfying of each and every party involved. And we pray, oh God, you continue to bless every effort and confirm every hope that the things discussed in this agenda will be carried out to its full without fail. In Jesus Christ's name, let it so say. Amen.
... states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Commissioner Proctor, I think you have the honors here.
Sheriff, I'm going to ask if number 20 would come down with me, please. Number 20, can we get you in the game?
Yeah.
Mr. President, if you please come forward. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. President, I've blessed you all. Mr. President, I've got number 20 here because he's way faster than me, and...
A lot younger.
Man.
Well, Seminoles stick together.
I see y'all got me double-teamed. I'm just standing in the middle trying to get through this moment. Mr. President, I want you to know you all right with me, and I believe you all right with most of the people in this room. And we're excited about the wonderful work that has been wrought under your leadership. It's been amazing. And, you know, we talked previously, and I was wondering what we could do to extend your contract and carry you about seven more years at FSU. I'm going to let number 20 and them worry about that kind of thing. Now, number 20, what I'm going to do, I'm going to read the first couple clauses, and if you want to use my glasses, because you're younger than me now. You're not supposed to need glasses yet.
I've got my contacts.
All right. This proclamation is presented to Florida State University, our president here today, President John Thrasher, and it goes, "Whereas Florida State University, founded in 1851, oldest continuous institution of higher education in Florida, it has evolved through every social era and significant political epoch of American history. And whereas over the years, we recognize the influential cultural, economic, and intellectual impact FSU represents to Leon County and North Florida." All right. "And whereas, a record-breaking 60,555 first-year students applied for admission to the 2019 summer and fall semester, a 20% increase over last year. The increase in demand for FSU education led to the largest freshman class in university history. And whereas graduate student enrollment is at an all-time high after Florida State University received more than 10,000 graduate school applications. And whereas Florida State's four-year graduation rate of 72% ranks among the top 10 public universities in the country, and number one in Florida..." Let me read that again. It's pretty important. "And whereas Florida State's four-year graduation rate of 72% ranks among the top 10 public universities in the country, and number one in the state of Florida." Take that, Gators. "Most notably, FS Florida State University has witnessed a uniformed graduation rate for all students. And whereas for the sixth straight year, Florida State University received insight into Diversity Magazine's Higher Education and Diversity Award, and was named a diversity champion for the fourth consecutive year. And whereas Kiplinger Personal Finance ranked Florida State University number nine on its annual list of best values in public colleges. Florida State University is among the two most affordable universities in the top 20 public universities as measured by United States News and World Report." I'm supposed to get this back to you, Commissioner Proctor, but I'm so excited, Reverend. I got it. "And whereas Florida State University's researchers received a record $233.6 million in funding from federal, state, and private sources in the 2019 fiscal year to support studies in areas such as health sciences, high-energy physics, and marine biology. And whereas in 2019, Florida State University is now ranked number 18 in the nation among public universities..."
Oh, we got it, man. 18th in the whole nation.
"...by U.S. News and World Report. Florida State University is one of the fastest-rising universities in the country and has jumped 25 spots since placing number 43 among public universities in 2016." When did you start, Mr. President?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That's my other time. "This can be attributed to university's focus on student success, including hiring more faculty to reduce class sizes and improving the facility, I mean, the faculty-student ratio. Therefore, a beer resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, finds it fitting and appropriate to recognize Florida State University for its outstanding contribution for higher education in the state of Florida. This is signed by the chairman, vice chair, as well as director of commission, and tested to by the county administrator. And before you give my hand, I also want to recognize my president, as well as our athletic director, for bringing one of the most passionate men I've seen as a head coach for our university to lead us back to prominence on the football field. I had the opportunity to hear him speak alone with our chairman during his news conference in person, and had also opportunity to sit, to talk to him personally as a player. Very excited about what he brings to the table for our university, and the passion that he shows, and the way he's going to lead our young men. Job well done, Mr. President. Job well done for our university."
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Before the president speaks...
Mr. President, you know, number 20 is the president of the Florida Association of Counties, so I give him a little extra deference and whatnot. But he's affording me, and my chairman is affording me, our former national president is allowing me to say and to share with you, we appreciate the support of Florida State, and I wanted to give to you personally the 32304 Prosperity for All Summit, which we had the pleasure of closing out the fourth summit last Thursday. And you came, yeah, you were there, and, Mr. President, what we have here is the 32304 ZIP Code summary of various data that makes very, very real and consistent with speeches that you've been making public about crime and other things that impact Florida State. And I just want you to know how much we appreciate, and wanted to give and share with you, these mementos that captures the work and the effort, and we appreciate your comments last week, and to know that Florida State is going to be a partner in the work that's moving forward. We sincerely appreciate you and affording us the use of the Turnbull Center. So, we have those things for you. We're going to take some pictures, but we want you to say something first before we take those pictures.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner Maddox, and thank you for your kind remarks about our new coach. I'm excited about our new coach. I've had spent a lot of time with him. You know, these interviews, you typically don't spend four hours. I've spent two different times with him in four hours. I think he has the passion and the capability that all of us want to bring back to Florida State University, and certainly hearing it from Commissioner Maddox that he gets it about this guy, I couldn't be prouder of him. So, thank you, Nick. I think he may be coming to call on you and see if you've got any eligibility left.
Mr. President, you recognize that I talked about the academics, and Nick talked about the football part. You started right there.
Well, I've come to find out in the last month, there are a lot more people interested in football than there are. Trust me, trust me. It's the front porch for a lot of people. But seriously, this, I'll let you guys go. I know how busy you are, and I appreciate, appreciate all of you. It's been an honor over the last five years to get to know each and every one of you, to understand your passion of Florida State University and the 42,000 students that we have. We have had applications this past year, 60,000 for our freshman classes currently there, and I'm told by our admissions folks that we're 9% over that already for this year, for the incoming freshman class. But we know we have some challenges, too, and one of these days, I hope I get a chance to come and talk to each of you about that. I won't use that today, but I just want to need to know that I appreciate all you all do for Florida State University. I appreciate the sheriff, too, and I know he's here. He may have left. No, there he is. Sheriff and I have a great, long-time relationship, goes back before either one of us had the jobs we currently have, and I appreciate what he does for our community and for Florida State University, and will continue to do, and we're looking forward to that. This is very meaningful coming from you all. It means a lot, and I will make sure that I share it with all of our staff and faculty and students at Florida State University, to know that their local county government appreciates this great university, in spite of the redneck president they have. It means a lot to me. We're looking forward to the next year with the great, great enthusiasm, and look forward to working with you all to continue the great work at Florida State University, and to continue the greatness of this county. And Jean and I have lived here now for five years, and we love Leon County. We love Tallahassee, and we want to spend a lot of our time here, after I'm out of this job, making sure that we continue to contribute. So, God bless each and one of you. Happy holidays for everybody. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor, my good friend, my good friend. Thank you very much. Thank you, Nick. Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Maddox, our state president suggested that since our president is the president of the 18th-ranked public institution in the United States, if he could come up and we take a picture collectively, and not just he and I, but that all of us would share in the moment with President Thrasher.
Only if you've got the time.
We're going to make time for number 18. We can do that.
All right. Okay.
Should we come down, or are we coming up? Why don't you come up? Well, can we get that up there? Get it, Matt. Does he need that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick comment before President Thrasher and his team leave here. In addition to all of the fantastic work you all have done that shows in the ranking of number 18, I also wanted to say you do a lot that people probably don't know about, working with us on blueprint projects, Innovation Park, a number of different things, a very strong community partner, and making sure our community is moving forward with jobs for all types of folks. So, thank you very much for that as well.
Don't know's. We've got a big agenda tonight. Up next, Sheriff McNeil. We would love to hear from you.
Good evening, commissioners and... Mr. Chairman, for the past three years, this commission and your staff, Mr. Rosenzweig and your county manager, Mr. Vince Long, have been strong and indispensable partners, and have been extremely helpful to me and my staff. With your help in the form of allowing your staff to work so closely with my staff, we've been able to have success in several areas, to include our continuing efforts to lower crime in our community, reduce our recidivism rate, and care for those in our care, custody, and control. And equally important, provide the resources required to enhance the professional efforts of the men and women of the Leon County Sheriff's Office. For all these reasons and many, many more, I am grateful for your substantial support. As we prepare for the events of the year 2020 that loom so substantially in our future, and as we contemplate the fiscal needs of our future efforts, to continue to protect and provide safety for all of the citizens of Leon County, while strengthening the entire Sheriff's Office, our service delivery systems, I just want each and every one of you to know that we have done a great deal this year, but there is a great deal more that must be done. I'd like for each of you to know that we, as we approach the coming year's challenges, that I and my team are encouraged by the achievements of 2019. We're encouraged because we saw what accomplishments we can have when we work together. Under the Sheriff's Office, smart on-crime initiatives, commonly referred to as all-in Leon, we have achieved great levels of success. However, even with those successes, we have a long way to go. Commissioners, during the past three years, we, the members of Leon County Sheriff's Office, along with our many law enforcement partners, have been able to forge strong neighborhood alliances and build greater levels of trust. My colleagues and the men and women of the Leon County Sheriff's Office have taken steps to advance proven strategies for improving and lowering our reentry of those persons coming from our prison systems back into Leon County. We have worked to reduce the recidivism rate for those persons in our detention facility. Moreover, we're experiencing, or, sorry, we're exploring, a wide range of initiatives directed at improving the lives of persons in our detention facility before they return to our community, with the hope for better outcomes. We are working with the Appalachia Center, exploring a wide range of new initiatives to more effectively meet the needs of those in our custody and care, who are suffering from mental health problems. In fact, we're working with our state attorney, Jack Campbell, our public defender, Andy Thomas, and Dr. Jay Reeve of the Appalachia Center, in an effort to create what we are calling the First Detention Facility Liaison for Mental Health Reentry Initiative.
Amen.
The goal here being to reduce recidivism through increased access to mental health services at the Leon County Detention Facility. The Leon County Sheriff's Office seeks to establish a specialized reentry program for adult defendants with mental health issues, our co-occurring, our co-occurring disorders. This will allow inmates with mental health illnesses to be diverted from our general population of our detention facility. In this model, the Appalachia Center will provide mental health treatment in the form of mental health case management, psychiatric medication management, group and individual therapy, and psychosocial rehabilitation. The obvious goal here, to help those persons with mental illness while reducing the number of persons in our detention facility and lowering the cost of repeat incarceration. As always, we will be counting on your continued support as we seek to implement these changes and move forth with a kind of comprehensive public safety solutions that are central to our all-in service system. Commissioners, I know that each of you are painfully aware of the vicious cycle of poverty, crime, and incarceration that grips our community, but I also believe that you are aware of the outstanding efforts and oftentimes heroic work of the deputies, officers, troopers, marshals, state and federal agents, working here in Leon County, assisting in our efforts to lower our crime rate and keep our community safe. I am pleased to note that our partner agencies have contributed greatly to our efforts to reduce crime in Leon County. For example, our Deputies Without Borders Initiative, staffed by Florida Highway Patrol Troopers, sheriff deputies from what color county, Jefferson County, Liberty County, and of course, Leon County. We have all worked together to curtail the flow of illegal drugs, and have aggressively identified and apprehended hundreds of violent criminals and persons dealing drugs in our community. Also with our Big Ben Strike Force, which is a multi-phased operation led by the Marshal Service, and operates with the goal of removing violent criminals from our community. We have apprehended hundreds of career criminals and taken numerous guns and drugs off the streets of Tallahassee, Leon County, and the Big Ben. I hope, Commissioners, that you have heard of our Special Projects Investigations Detection Enforcement and Response Unit, commonly referred to as SPIDER. The deputies assigned to our SPIDER unit are deployed to criminal hotspots, and based on the analytics we receive from our real-time crime center, in a data-sharing process across agencies relating to crimes as they occur here in the Big Ben. The Leon County Sheriff's Office SPIDER Unit and our Real-Time Crime Center have perhaps been one of the most important and effective proactive crime reduction initiatives we have embarked upon over the last year. As we prepare for the year 2020, leveraging our technology and our ability to quickly analyze crime in a manner that enhances our predictive nature of our response to crime, we will be using those pillars of crime fighting to reduce the number of crimes committed in our community. Commissioners, as it relates to our crime reduction efforts, strategies, needs, and outcomes, I believe it important to quickly share with you other aspects of our all-in initiative. All-in isn't just about arrests, and not simply about detention and mental health, but also all-in efforts seeks to reach the youth of our community, prevent crime, and help build relationships, and in that regard, we have established three promising initiatives, the first of which is called Worship With Me, which is an initiative to connect the local at-risk youth with places of worship, in hopes of gaining experiences that are meaningful and impactful in mentoring the youth of our community. We also, we also have an initiative called Back on Track, which is an intervention designed to reach first- or second-time juvenile offenders who've been sentenced to probation. The Back on Track Initiative is intended to bridge the gap between law enforcement officers and the troubled youth within our communities. We have a curriculum which focuses on racial and ethnic disparities, and on disproportionate minority contacts. The initiative has a goal of addressing these issues through building connections, developing mutual respect, building trust, and a willingness to continue the dialogue beyond our initiative. Commissioners, some of you may be aware of our initiative we established this past summer, and I think that some of you may have even attended. Our Wake Up Call, this is an interactive forum designed for youth in Leon County to be heard by the leadership and the stakeholders of our community. The primary objective is to hold biannual community forums, allowing community leaders to listen to a diverse group of young people in our community, so we give voice and hear from their perspective what perhaps some of the solutions are. And finally, thank you for your support of all of our ongoing efforts to improve not only our community, but improve the working conditions of the men and women of the Leon County Sheriff's Office, our detention facility employees. In the year ahead, we will continue to address these challenging times in crime and problems in our community. We will also try to address our ongoing issues, perhaps you know, with our longstanding need to improve our fiscal plan in our detention facility. Commissioners, thank you for your support of our aviation unit, when you helped in getting us a new helicopter after some 45 years. Thank you so very much, and thank you for all you do through your staff to make the job of being sheriff and that much less of a burden. Commissioners, as we continue this relentless effort to reduce crime, grow stronger relationships with the people of our county, and to build lasting collaborative relationships with our community partners and law enforcement organizations, we have made several commitments, and those commitments are that we are going to work together to lower our crime rate, but we can't do that alone. We will continue to need your help and your assistance, and that of the citizens of Leon County. Commissioners, once again, thank you so much for all you do, and for all you do to support the Leon County Sheriff's Office. God bless you. We wish you a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year if I don't see you before then. I would stop and see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff McNeil, we're grateful for the comprehensive report that you've given us on public safety, the state of union of public safety in our community, and I'm perhaps least qualified to say this on this desk, because I only have a range of 23 completed years on this desk. But what you've just shared in my time is, in fact, the most comprehensive report I have heard from the Sheriff's Office ever. You've told us what you've accomplished, you've told us of the partnerships, you've shared with us new directions you'd like to go, and you have told us, what, 20? shared with us new directions you'd like to go, and you have told us what 2020 purports to look like under your leadership. Frankly, I'm blown away because the reentry program for mental health is just incredible. And because the board allows me to be a part of the Public Safety Coordinating Council, which permits me to serve as chair, year after year, our task is to try and reduce the number of people who are incarcerated. And everything that you've outlined is consistent with recommendations, suggestions that occur at this table here. And your full implementation of reasonable suggestions really gives a glow to my heart. And I want to thank you. I also want to thank you for your support and recognition of the 32304 Initiative and that you were not ashamed to place money in the sponsorship, your participation, intellectual engagement. It shows the dimensions of your heart, and your full report shows the dimensions of your heart, which oftentimes I know you've got to, because of that uniform, project to be hard and to be tough and all of that. But at the end of the day, it's a recognition that for vulnerable people, that sometimes life and the wiring of citizens' minds and thoughts, behavior, you get it that everybody don't walk the same path. But the effort to do something with mental health is so huge. And your recognition of poverty and its relation to crime and its relation to incarceration is unlike any law enforcement person at your level I have ever heard. And I think that we're very fortunate as a community to have someone who's more than lock them up and throw away the key. So I celebrate your presence. I celebrate the glad tidings, and I celebrate the work and the effort that you've brought this whole community on a two-word theme that I think has been effectual, and that is "all in." And for what you're endeavoring to do in 2020, the Back On Track Program, the workshop with at-risk youth, the Racial and Ethnic Disparity Project, and the Wake Up Call of the Four Bigs. And one time I rode with Soul Santa down to Frenchtown, but I didn't know the helicopter was 40 years old. I didn't know that part, so I'm trembling, and I'm not sure if they'll let me ride on a brand-new one. But I'm sure Santa Claus appreciates that you got him some new wheels, man. That's gonna be fantastic. So from our commission and on behalf of the good citizens of District One in Leon County who respect your work, who cherish your leadership, may God's presence be upon you and continue to sustain your efforts to be a sheriff who's also humanitarian. And I think that you've got that balancing thing going pretty strong, and I'll stop there and allow other Commissioners to weigh in.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Well, let me just add, Sheriff, thanks for all that you do. You make, I know you've been in the hot seat for the last couple of years here, and we appreciate all the hard work you do. I'm curious, and not to try and oversimplify things, but you read in the newspaper and the headlines, and it's hard to call through and figure out, are there two or three things that we can look at and say, these are the way we can measure if we're moving in the right direction? I mean, I know you've got your hands in a lot of different things, and it sounds like you're doing all the right things, but it's hard for me to figure out, are we moving in a positive direction? And I'm just, I'm looking for something to kind of cut through some of the clutter, I guess.
Yes, the, what we usually use is the UCR report that comes out at the end of the year, and I believe that UCR report will indicate that we, for I think the third year in a row, that we will have a reduction in overall crime in Leon County. It will also indicate that we perhaps have not moved from being number one in the state because it's not static. The other communities around the state are also improving. But the thing that drives all the discussions in our community, quite honestly, are the number of murders that are taking place. And that's where we've got to focus a great deal of our resources and, in fact, try to have those interventions with the kids in our community, young people in our community. Many of the murders we've had recently have been among kids who come from one side of the community to the other in terms of conflicts that occur. And there are other murders that take place that are drug-related, and each of those require a different approach. And from that perspective, we are engaged in all of that, trying to do everything we can to drive down those number of shootings and the violence. But I have to say to you, I am buoyed up by the fact that we have a new police chief coming on board, and partnership is important and having a clear vision that we all share, and we're moving in the same direction, which is extremely helpful as we go forward.
Well, thanks for all that you do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff, thank you for everything that you do, you and your team. I can tell that we're making progress. Still have a lot of work to do, but very grateful for everything that you and your team are doing. Quick question about Marcy's Law. Your perspective on this around the state since the law passed in November 2018, I think it was enacted in January of this year, have you seen a general consensus formed among law enforcement agencies to where they might be more comfortable sharing more information? Your Sheriff's Office, I know, has been pretty good about providing as much information as you think you can. I know I've got a lot of citizens that are frustrated with TPD because they have a much more restrictive interpretation of Marcy's Law and what they think they can share. Do you sense around the state, and in particular here in Leon County and in Tallahassee, that we might be coming to some type of overall consensus where we might be able to share a little bit more information than we currently get from some of our law enforcement agencies here?
I am a little reluctant to speak for the city of Tallahassee, but I think I can share a conversation that I had with current chief outlaw just on yesterday. We were having a conversation around the issues happening at Florida State University and the lack of information that parents can get with respect to what's going on. And I voiced that same concern, and the chief assured me that the City of Tallahassee Police Department is about to relax their position on the release of information.
Yeah, just real quickly, that's good news. I'm glad to hear that. I was just wondering, a lot of times we hear from people in the community about gangs. They're worried that we have a gang problem in Tallahassee. I didn't hear you mention that. I mean, you're talking about different youths from one side of town arguing with another. Is there a gang problem here?
You picked up on that nuance, huh? We have, I've lived my entire adult life here in Tallahassee. I've been in law enforcement for over 40 years. In all those years, we've had loosely organized gangs in Tallahassee. It ebb and flows with respect to how engaged those young persons are. I would not say that we have anything to the magnitude of crips and bloods that you see in major cities, but we do have groups of young people who gather together for one, and that's the definition of a gang. It's just a group of people who gathers together with a common cause, and in that respect, the definition we do.
And I appreciate also the Worship With Me program. Is that, and how did that come about?
Well, we tried to make sure that we look at and research things that are occurring around the country that have perhaps good outcomes. And we noticed that in Pennsylvania, this notion of Worship With Me and some of the data that came back from the studies that were done there indicates that if you can have interactions in a faith kind of environment with young persons and their families, that the opportunity for those persons to get out of crime goes down something on a magnitude 30 to 50 percent. And I thought that worth that effort. And we are now in the process of putting together a number of, I won't say churches, but places of worship across our community and asking that those persons engage with us to adopt two families.
Right. I know there are several of, the detention centers have relationships with the faith community once people are incarcerated.
Right.
That seem to be effective, so you're trying to get ahead of that a little bit.
Yes.
Yeah, I thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, Sheriff, I want to publicly commend you for your willingness to come out and meet with some of our concerned neighborhood groups on your time, a time when you were obviously away from your family, and meeting with concerned neighborhoods with their concerns, and not just meeting with them, but having evidence of increased proactive policing, which I think is a relief for some of those neighborhoods, both in the South and the West, to see proactive rather than reactive law enforcement. And the effort there does not go unnoticed each day as I travel back and forth in that community. So thank you especially for those folks in District Two that appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Sheriff, thank you for your hard work. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All you do. Jim McShane, it's all yours.
Thank you, Commissioners. While I'm waiting for this, I just want to say we have folks working in the detention center now because one of the things that if somebody's going to be successful coming out of that, that environment, they need to get a job. And so thankfully, our sheriff has really worked hard at trying to put that together, and we're pleased to be one of his partners. So this presentation, I'm just going to cover quickly, mission, vision, values, our collaboration with Leon County, how we innovate, lead, advocate, and programs by the numbers. So first thing, of course, we're trying to find people employment. Our goal is shifted in the new law to really focus on employers. We need to give the employers what they're looking for. The vision in Florida is that we'll be the global leader of talent, and our values are business-driven, continuous improvement, integrity, purpose-driven, and talent-focused, and our pillars I'll go through. So thank you, Leon County, and the leadership of this commission and our administrator. I love working with Shinkton, I got to say that because he's been wonderful to work with. Library System, working with them, doing our outreach on a regular basis with workshops in all seven libraries. We have a junior apprenticeship program here at the county that we're working with. The Office of Economic Vitality is a wonderful partner that, and critical to our relationship. And of course, Christina sits on our board now because of her position. Our Summer Youth Program, we appreciate working with you on that. Dynamic Futures Training is what we've given some of the young people. What that does is create essential skills so that when they go into a job, they know what to expect, they know how to dress, they know the ethics that are required, they know what leadership they have to take on. These are things that most of our businesses complain about to us all the time. Commissioner Maddox serves as our chief elected official, and we really appreciate that. Working with the Sheriff's Department and the Detention Center, as I said, we're all in too, and then working with Commissioner Proctor on 32304. On our collaboration, we work with Echo and Capillary Community Action, and we got a grant from United Way that we're working together on. Big Ben, Continuum of Care, past chair, affordable housing, and I call it workforce housing, is popping up all over the country frankly at this point as being a major issue. We, I work with our learning, our early learning coalition, I'm on the board, and I'm the Audit Chair. Arrow, we support entrepreneurship in our region. Opportunity Florida, which is for our surrounding rural counties, their economic development voice, and then we work with all three chambers here in town. On our innovation, as you know, we changed our delivery service to make it easier for our customers. We designed our centers to support the function and promote professional environment in our centers. Our IT apprenticeship grant right now is going forward. We have an apprentice right now with Inspired Technologies, and we hope to build that to 20 or 30 apprenticeships as time goes on. We have a manufacturing sector grant from Career Source Florida where we're trying to coordinate our manufacturers and start to have them work together with our school systems and our training providers in order to let us know what they need and make sure that that training is there. We had our third Talent Innovation Summit this year, Building and Sustaining Your Talent Pipeline. Every business has this need, all of us have this need. Florida Georgia Workforce Alliance, I just came from Valdosta. We had our meeting, we are breaking up into teams. We have six workforce boards, three in Georgia, three in Florida that are working together. Why are we working together? Because we need to build the talent, the value and the talent that's out there and be able to give our employers what they're looking for. Partnering with the Department of Corrections on a grant right now, and also received a national emergency grant for Hurricane Michael. Where we lead is, I'm a member of the City of Tallahassee A-hack Committee, Citizens' Advisory and Blueprint, which I'm now going to be the vice chair, I guess. LT-33 grad, and Kara Smith is also getting her LT-37 this year. Dan McGrue, most of you know, he sits on the Sheriff's Department All-In Committee. So we are participating at every level that we feel is important for us to be there. And advocacy, so one of the things I want to point out to you all is this year, the federal support for our system was $11 million less because of our unemployment. What it doesn't take into account is the fact that the people that are walking into our centers now need more services, more help than what we can provide at this point. 24 career seekers boards are funded by formula funds so that unemployment percentage affects our income. Florida Workforce Development Association is also out supporting the Sodowsky Act funds being fully funded, again, getting back to workforce housing. We have to have housing available for the people that are working here, or they will move and go somewhere where they can afford to live and earn a living in order to pay for their home or their rent. Congress is going to be looking at reauthorization, so we're up on that from a national level. So last year, we provided, last year ended June 30th of this year, 37,000 services system-wide, 7,000 unique career seekers, 4,900 attendees at our workshops, and 45 work experience sites where we pay the wages in order to hopefully get that person employed once we're done paying for it. Progress by the numbers again, 13,258 solutions provided to our employers, 32 recruitment events, five hiring affairs, and 1,921 career seekers in attendance. Six industry sector rounds, 152 employers. Again, we're reaching out and trying to make sure that we're providing what the employers are looking for. And finally, our total solutions provided to career seekers were 84,450 and 842 career center visits by veterans, and we have done a real good job on serving our veterans. 163 received 2,524 services in order to effectively work with their significant barriers to employment and get them employed. And last year, our staff pledged 12,173 to the United Way campaign. So these are the top things that we send people are looking for, is truck driving, practical nursing, firefighting, registered nursing, medical assistant, and nursing assistant. These are the places that we spend our money. So you can see, Lively's at the top, Tallahassee Community College is close behind. Those are the two we spend the most money with, and then truck driver training, national training, and Roadmaster. Part of the reason that those folks get most of us in the region to go to them is because they get almost 100 percent placement. People graduate out of that program, they're placed in a job immediately, and of course, we're measured on that with our measurements. If you're not on Facebook or even any of the other ones, Twitter and all of that, we post these when we have successes so that you can be aware of what we've done for each of these individuals and how we've helped them out. And then this is just a sample of what we post also. When we have our workshops, we let the public know. And then finally, I'm here to take any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jim. Another great report. Although I got to say, or my question is, it seems like there's a lot more grants this year for apprenticeships and for manufacturing for other things than we've seen in the past. Are you seeing an uptick in that?
Yes, I mean, the governor is really focused on apprenticeships, and so those Yes, I mean, the governor is really focused on apprenticeships, and so those apprenticeships grant, for the most part, go to the community colleges and not to us. But yes, we're focused on it, we're trying to build that awareness in the employer community that this is one way to build your staff. For the young people, the big difference is, if they work it through Lively at this point, and that's where we have our IT grant, it will cost them nothing. They are going to be earning a salary right from the get-go, they're employed right away. They are going to be learning on the job as well as taking courses, and if they take the courses and pass the test that they have at Lively, they're going to get a raise. And so, they can work their way anywhere from $30,000 a year up to $180,000 a year. It's really up to them on how quick and how much they want to work to get up to that.
Thank you for that. I think this has been something in our conversation for a long time, and really grateful that the programs are developing. I know we need to do more work on apprenticeship, but this is a great start. And the last thing, you all did a tremendous amount of work after Hurricane Michael throughout the region with your other career source partners. I knew you got the grant for that, but thank you for your efforts there in the last year and couple months.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you. Ms. McShane, I want to thank you for this report. I'm exhausted, and I'm excited at the same time. The volume of work, the numbers that you have to back it up, incredible. And it comes down to, the number of career seekers is 84,450, and I didn't get a chance to divide that up by 300 days to figure what that equals a day. Maybe you all know how many, but that's a phenomenal number of citizens to respond to in the tri-county area. Your innovate, your lead programs are full. And I would, just a distant observer, I would want you all to maybe streamline, because you are like from, I mean, it's a wide pathway that you're doing everything, and I would want to caution that we not overextend, but you know, perfecting some areas. And a couple of questions that I had related to your report. I'm curious about Hurricane Michael. You received funding for that national emergency grant.
Right, 200,000.
And I'm pondering, what were the jobs that, was there a spike in cleanup?
Yes.
Debris removal, people roofing? Could you just share with us a little bit about what Michael did to shift the labor force?
So, the issue with the national emergency grant, the issue that we have at this point is it's very restrictive on who can hire somebody, it's either a government or a nonprofit. And that hurt us, because out in Gadsden County, in particular where most of the damage was up near Chattahoochee, the county ended up hiring subcontractors to do that kind of work. Well, the way that law's written, I can't do that, I can't put people in those jobs when I should be able to. And I've gone all the way up to the Department of Labor and had discussions with the folks up there, with the deputy secretary, that they need to make some changes in that to make that better. But right now, we have 11 people that are employed out in Gadsden County, working for, I think for the most part, working for the cities in that area, doing continual cleanup. It has to be cleanup-related, so they're still going, and there's still a lot of cleanup to do.
And I just say to our commission off that point, that it's always, I mean, some fuddy duddy dynamics with respect to who, I mean, people get very, lines are drawn on who can clean up, and the demarcation of who gets the contract and who's frozen out. I mean, I am so sick and tired, I don't know what to do. And it's never the collegial, I mean, we see it in the big spirited thing, but when it gets down to the dollar contract on who gets paid and who can participate, there needs to be some rethinking. We need to open up the lines, and here you have only 11 people participating in debris, I mean, after a storm like Michael, and only 11 people can qualify to work to pick sticks off of the ground. Something is wrong. The rules are so complex related to that, and it's almost like, I won't say unions control, but there's something, something that regular people can't get a job to pick sticks off the ground when sticks need to be picked up everywhere. And I just think that we need a deeper look, because when we're talking about hurricanes, certainly we're also talking about restoration.
Mm-hmm.
And the restoration part is such a tight fight about who can get paid, I don't like it, it needs to be looked at. My final inquiry, I think when I looked at a couple of your slides, 43% of interest in truck driving, but your next slide said that only 10% of the funding went into that area. How do you reconcile the greatest interest, 43%, but the least amount of money is actually expended in that category?
Well, we're now, because of where Career Source Florida is taking us, we're industry workforce, looking at healthcare, looking at manufacturing, looking at IT, looking at all these different sectors and how we're going to impact them. Number one. Number two is, besides the placement value of those, the other value is to have people that are going to be trained in something that's in high demand in our area. That is a requirement for our money, we cannot spend our money on whatever we would like, we have to spend it on jobs that are in demand that pay at least a living wage or higher. And that's very difficult here to be able to do that. And so, what you see is what we're able to do at this point in time. And the other comment I do want to make, which I either passed that slide or whatever, but with that loss of money, we've lost 12 people out of our 60 people, and next year does not look better. And this is one of the problems that we're going to have, because if we do go into recession, all of a sudden, we're going to be back to 3,000 and 4,000 people a month coming into our centers, and we're not going to have the staff to be able to deal with it.
Amazing. My final ask, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your patience. Ms. McShane, with me in my inquiry here, I was of a mindset that what you all did was job training, but you're actually going out now and said one of the greatest need is to get businesses aligned and receptive to, matching with potential employees.
Yep.
Does the chambers assist or align with you in this spirit and effort? And you getting cuts in your, how will we maintain efficiencies in delivering with a minimized staff?
So, yes, I would say that's one of the changes this year, that both Capital City Chamber and BBMC, which I sit on that board, and also the Greater Tallahassee Chamber, we are working together and we are meeting with, we just met with one of our major manufacturers here, who is struggling to be able to hire 50 people. One of the issues that came up is they're paying $11 an hour and Target's paying 12. You got to get realistic with how much you're paying to hire people in order to get them to be attracted to your place. So, we've had the tough discussions, but we had Lively there, we had TCC there, we were all in the room, we had OEV there. I mean, we're going to help the business community become more aware of what they need to do in order to help make this successful for them and us.
So, what is a living wage per hour?
Well, at $11 an hour, they're not competitive to put somebody out on a line that's making things.
This is a state on the West Coast that's going to $15 state required minimum wage, would we be, how would you see $15 an hour for our community?
Well, I mean, it's a step in the right direction. When you look back on how we've managed to take the minimum wage, we've left it there for way too many years. It's sort of like, in one chamber is that they didn't raise any of their dues for like five or six years, and then all of a sudden they raised them like 30%. Well, it becomes a problem. Why didn't you raise it 2% a year, 3% a year? Do it a little at a time, because that way, everything else around in the economy can adjust. And I think that's what needs to happen.
Jim, thank you, anybody else?
What's the manufacturing company that wants to hire 50 people that's paying $11 an hour? What's the name of it?
I don't know if they've given me permission to say that, so I can tell you privately, because they had this meeting separate to try and figure out what they were going to do, but it is on the northwest side of town.
Northwest side of town, okay, there's a clue. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Great, Jim, thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
Chair, real quick, I just, as the chief exec, I just want to take an opportunity as chief elected officer to tell Jimmy's doing a magnificent job, not only in Leon County, but in the Big Ben area as a whole. I would appreciate what Career Source does for the capital region, and I want to thank Commissioner Proctor for his questions, and it's squarely in line with what I think Jim and the rest of the staff are trying to do, and look forward to continuing to serve and continue to make a difference in the Big Ben area. Thank you so much for what you do, and your staff does, and the plans that you guys come up with and moves forward. Anything our board can do, I think, as you can hear the interest up here, we're more than happy to do to help assist what you're trying to achieve at Capital Source Capital Region.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for your leadership, too.
And, Mr. Chairman, I say that they've also been involved in each of the Prosperity 32304 summits, which we richly appreciate their presence and input, thank you.
Great, Jim, thanks. Commissioner Dozier, I think, is going to take the program over here now. No, we'll do that after, we'll just roll this in. We've got a couple of special guests that I understand we're going to have come up and do a brief presentation collectively, so we have three, I'll let you tee it off, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three public speakers who will not be able to be here later during our normal time where we can engage with our speakers, so I ask the chair's permission to allow them to come up, give a brief presentation within their nine minutes, I have three speaker cards, and allow us to engage with them for a short time here at the beginning. So, Mr. Chair, we do have three speaker cards, as I said, but I think they're going to work this presentation together, so I'd like to ask Paloma Rambona, Sidney Forsland, and Meg Norvell to come up. And as these young ladies are coming to the podium, Sidney and Meg were my summer interns this year, and Paloma shadowed me for a day, and these three young ladies, Meg and Sidney are high school students at Charles, and Paloma is at McClay, they came up with an idea that we think's pretty special and worthy of our consideration. So, with that, I will turn it over to you all, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name's Meg Norvell, I'm a sophomore at Charles High School, and my address is 7109 Heritage Ridge Road.
Hi, I'm Sidney Forsland, I'm a junior at Charles High School, and my address is 8816 Winged Foot Drive.
Hi, I'm Paloma Rambona, I'm a freshman at McClay High School, and my address is 9918 Oakwood Road. Right, so the idea is to allow students to have the similar experience that all three of us had over the summer, and get connected inside of the commission. Sorry. Okay, so yeah, the main focus of the idea was to get more students involved like we were over the summer.
Paloma, let me stop you real quick. We couldn't hear you on the microphone, so if you could speak up just a little bit.
Okay.
I know this isn't easy, you guys are going to be great.
Cool.
So, the idea we had was to have high school students from all of Leon County come, and they could apply for a program in which they volunteer as a page during the Leon County Commission meetings.
While paging, they could help pass out comment cards, direct traffic, let attendees know where the agendas are located, and help commissioners and aides during the meeting.
The benefits are firsthand experience of county government, getting comfortable with your local government and learning how it works, building your resume, contacts and letters of recommendation for the future, and Bright Futures Volunteer Hours.
It would be an online application process, it would be 15 applicants selected each semester, and it would be open to all public and private high schools.
The pages would be required to work at a minimum from 3:00 to 5:30 at each commission meeting they attend, and if they work past 5:30, then they would get additional service hours.
When applying, the students would have to commit to attending a specific number of meetings. The number of meetings they would have to attend would be based on the number of applicants chosen.
Thank you for your time, we hope that you consider our idea.
Thank you so much.
This opportunity could offer students a fun learning experience and benefit the students, citizens, and commissioners of Leon County Government. Thank you.
Don't go away yet, we might have some questions here, which was...
What a great idea, yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, just an intro here, both Sidney and Paloma served as pages in the legislature, so we went to breakfast the morning that these three young ladies were with me, early on in summer intern program, and they came up with this idea, and I kind of put them on the spot later that day. They had to pitch it to our county administrator during briefing, so they've had some time to develop it, and I just want to say you all have done a great job looking at all the details and making the presentations, so thank you very much for doing this, and I'll turn it over to any other questions or comments.
Well, I would say the caliber of leadership here is far superior to what you see at the legislature, just one minute's opinion. So, I guess the devil's in the details about how we would administer this, but I would entertain a motion if somebody wants to take it that...
I'll second Commissioner Dozier's motion.
I would love to make a motion that we bring back an agenda item to flesh out a Leon County page program that will provide Bright Futures Hours and other benefits for our high school students here locally.
Mr. Chair, we can't let them get away without grilling them, though.
Let's ask some hard questions, so come on, Commissioner Maddox.
All right. So, the only question I have is probably a pretty easy question. Did you all plan on being our first three pages? No? Wow, okay, that's pretty definite. No, this is pretty exciting, it's innovative, and the thoughtfulness of it all is something that you get when you mix a program like our summer youth program with what we do here on the commission, so congratulations, this is well needed, thank you so much for bringing it to us, and I look forward to kicking it off for the agenda item to come back and let's vote on, it's pretty awesome, thank you.
Great idea, we have a motion on the floor, any other discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that it's very timely, and as we enter, and it's ironic that three young ladies bring this forward, because year 2020 marks the 100th year anniversary of women being empowered to vote. It's just extraordinary, so I can't wait to see the details of it.
Well, congratulations. Commissioner Dozier, you want to weigh in again?
Mr. Chair, I'll just say that each of them has at least one parent in the audience who are very proud, I know right now, and deservedly so. Great job developing the idea, and I look forward to the agenda item and hearing your thoughts about that, so well done, ladies, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the motion, as I understand it, was Commissioner Proctor, you asked that they be allowed to vote at county commission meetings as part of their internship?
Oh, absolutely.
Commissioner Dozier, great idea. We have a motion, and we have a second, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries, ladies, thank you very much for your leadership. Okay, now, on to consent, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you have one consent item pulled, item number 20, pulled by Commissioner Minor.
We have a motion and a second for the remainder of consent, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? The one that is pulled is?
Is Commissioner's item number 20, is a status report on DOMI's Third Act Senior Entrepreneurship Program, and I would like to advise you that you have one speaker card on this item, Danielle Irwin.
All right. Who pulled it? You pulled it?
Yes.
Okay, Danielle, why don't we let Danielle come up first, and then we...
Thank you, good afternoon Commissioners, Danielle Irwin, 3185 Ferns Glen Drive. I put this one and one from the consent agenda item on my speaker card, which was item number 19, the annual status report for the minority... item number nineteen, the annual status report for the minority business and small business enterprise expenditures, because I believe that both this one and agenda item number twenty work to support the social infrastructure that we have here in our community. I speak with a certain level of authority as an entrepreneur, three times over, and a small business owner myself. When I was in Jacksonville here, I'm an employee of a small business. We, these remarks are not self-serving. Leon County is not my market. My market are, is the coastal region of our state, and we're not a coastal county, so these remarks really are more related to the need for a healthy local economy with good opportunities, economic opportunities for small businesses and entrepreneurs. I want to point out also that I have had the benefit of teaching Third Act performers who are ready to go on to the stage of nursing, if you'll allow the little... I also want to point out that one of the items in the small business report mentioned a dramatic lack of participation in professional services and architectural and engineering support arenas, and those, the allegation or the, the causation for that was really attributed to the continuing services contracts that often get renewed. As a professional myself, working on some of these types of contracts in other areas of the state, both as a prime but more often as a sub, I have noticed the difficulty in breaking in on continuing services contracts because of the overlap of services that a large firm and a small firm owned either by a minority or a woman can often, often have as a detriment, an obstacle to participation. And only in the counties that I've worked in that have had a mandatory participation in the professional services arena have the larger firms that have an overlap of services with small businesses been required to get creative about how they would share the scope of services. And it was only in those counties that had a mandatory commitment of a certain amount of the contract going to minority and small businesses that we actually saw a growth in that arena. So I would encourage you, as we're talking about social infrastructure, both on the support for entrepreneurs, senior or otherwise, and the support for small businesses, that we consider alternative ways to trigger more participation in some of the underserved areas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion for the item.
Sure. Ms. Chairman, if I have a quick commentary? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just, I wanted to, to pull this agenda item, really just to thank Christina Perez of O E V and Antonio Montoya of DOMI Station and his team for working on the Third Act Entrepreneurial Entrepreneurship Pilot. Baby boomers are retiring at the rate of ten thousand a day in this country, and they will for the next ten years. I don't know if you all familiar with the OK Boomer internet meme, but there's a dichotomy between retiring baby boomers and millennials and Gen Z. But the cities that are gonna thrive over the next decades will be the ones that actually bridge that gap, as opposed to widen that distance. And so if Tallahassee and Leon County are looking for ways to, to bridge that gap and bring in retiring baby boomers that are interested in working in either their own entrepreneurial project or cross pollinating and joining a team of millennials or Gen Z folks who are working on their project of their own, that's an incredible advantage that Tallahassee and Leon County could bring to developing our local economy. So very excited about what Antonio and Christina and, and all the folks at DOMI Station are doing on this. This is a really neat idea, and Florida A R P is very enthusiastic about it. Choose Tallahassee is also excited about the idea of taking what this pilot produces and then marketing that to seniors across the entire country. Think Steve Evans times fifty in terms of people just that, that you, you wanna have working in, in, on entrepreneurial projects here to help bolster our economy, earn some supplemental income for our seniors, and just create more excitement about what we have going on right now in our entrepreneurial space. So really excited about it, wanna thank you all for your tremendous work on this, and very interested in, in seeing what comes up in the next several months. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Proctor.
Chairman, our literature tells us that the O V staff, O E V staff is currently reviewing new applicants and applications for grants that account at twenty-five thousand, I guess, per opportunity for recipient. How are these being advertised and how does the community be made aware of, of these twenty-five thousand dollar a year grant?
Mr. Chairman, I can take that for you. I'd have to ask Christina Perez or Ben Pender to come on up and provide a little more detail. I see Christina's here.
Hi, Commissioner. We posted those applications opened on October first, and they closed in the middle of November, and we pushed that out through social media, through our newsletters, and notified our partners within the workforce development areas as well.
What is the response level been relative to last year?
We received three applications, and last year we handed out four awards, and this year we had, we received three applications. We're in the process of reviewing those, and we should be able to make an announcement by the end of the week.
I mean, so like, relative to the potential number of persons that might have an interest in a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, is three applications really a, a, a exciting number of rewards? Are we reaching enough people? Are just a teaspoon people? How come only three people responding?
Commissioner, we are, this is the second, the third round of applications that we've done for this Elevate Fund, and after this round, our team will be reevaluating that to see how we've done with the reach of those and be bringing back some recommendations to you at your March meeting for the Blueprint International or Intergovernmental Agency.
Commissioners, I believe for the value of what these grants represent and the actual response level, I don't know if the public is disinterested, if the public has a perception that is too hard to, the bar's too high, if there's too much rigor to go through, but I'm somewhat despondent by twenty-five thousand dollar grant and only three people this year and four last year being awarded, and I don't even know if the word, how that word is getting out. Mrs. Danielle mentioned the term mandatory. I have no other questions, Christina. I have no questions of you, but I did wanna ask legal, our county attorney, the mandatory commitments, which with respect to how they weigh against, she used the word continuing contracts, and I know that our chairman, Chairman Deloche has been, has articulated frequently his concern that we review contracts and not just re-up, re-up, re-up. That was, you know, has always been something he's been concerned with. But how does the continuing contracts and to what extent and what percentage, or is it a significant enough percentage of money that the continuing contracts gobble up? So much so that we need to put some mandatory language, or mandatory commitment, or, it used to be a word called set aside, mandated for continuing contracts? How, how do you see that? Are there any conflicts? Do we have any legal obstacles to which would allow us to allow for women, minority, and smaller businesses to get a share of public dollars?
Commissioner, you're, you're about to approve the new disparity study at, at the blueprint meeting and here fairly soon, January probably. And so that would give you the, the goals, if you would. I don't know of anybody that uses mandatory set asides anymore because of the significant legal hurdles that you have to go, the strict scrutiny tests that you have to pass. And so I, I believe our program is, is going to be pretty good with the new disparity study. And in the scope of the continuing supply contracts, we rebid them on a fairly significant basis. I mean, we're talking two or three years when we do, for example, the engineering contracts. I mean, we go out to bid and reassemble them, I would think every two, maybe three years, but it, there aren't any ten-year-old contracts. Even the ones with our bond council, we've done on a three-year basis, so I, I don't think that's a big impact for us.
Okay, well, overall, I, I appreciate that, and Ms. Danielle, I, I have heard these advisories before with respect to mandatory language, which our council has always been somewhat conservative, and we've always been advised that strict scrutiny application would be very difficult to satisfy. So he's consistent, he's been that way a long time. I've tried to get him converted, you know, but I, I can't move that guy. We differ. May I just state that I heard President Thrasher say that they had sixty thousand applicants, over sixty thousand, last year to apply for Florida State. I heard him say that this year that they're running nine percent greater than they were last year, which is somewhere like fifty-five hundred exceeding last year. That's amazing, and people are applying, and many of them, they want to pay Florida State and give them some money. I just use that as a contrast, that we have this program that is giving out grants, giving this money, twenty-five thousand dollars, and ain't nobody applying. I don't get it. One, you, you apply to go write a check and give it to them, another, if you just apply, we'll give you the money. Something needs to be revised, and I think that even if Christina, I would suggest that we put that program on hold, let's doctor it up, figure out what a full court press would be like. We, we can't hardly validate that our community has so much need and only three, four people. I think we've gotta rethink how to communicate the opportunity, and I would love to see vent some effort that we rethink how we present to the public opportunity abides here in the community. But three, three people applied, somebody's not communicating. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move the option one to accept the status report.
Second, we have a motion and a second. This is the last remaining consent item, just so you know, we're kinda, we got a big docket tonight, so any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Last consent item carries. So now we are on general business, oh, now we have speakers to be heard, so, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've got two speaker cards in. The first one is Elizabeth Emanuel. To be followed by Robert Lord.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I just wanted to ensure that I was taking every opportunity to say thank you. While the item was on the agenda and wasn't discussed, the sponsorship that you all have provided for our Sundown Concert Series has been extraordinary. This was a year of many firsts, so we appreciate the fact that we were able to extend from four free concerts in Cascades to seven. Those additional four concerts were wonderful. We brought in well over twelve thousand people to downtown and non-peak weekends, so it was a great opportunity to have a large portion of our community show up and support artists from regional and local areas, including our hometown hero, Royce Lovett, who performed. It was also an incredible opportunity to get to work with the Visit Tallahassee staff. Carrie and Deontay and Scott and Katie were wonderful to work with to help promote this event throughout our community, so I just wanted to take a few moments to say thank you very much for the support, and we hope to come back next year with even bigger numbers and a better concert series, so, thank you.
Next speaker, Robert Lord.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Robert Lord, or Bobby Lord. I'm here today to speak to you briefly about an item that has arisen in the development support, the growth management area pertaining to flood letters. A flood letter comes in response to a FEMA flood map, which is drawn up as the FEMA Plan requires, and it requires a technician to ascertain whether or not your property, which is going to affect every constituent, probably every member in this room, if it goes forth as planned. And what they have, have brought forward is that if you have a, and I have three or four people, customers, that are, been out, has been out of their mobile home, this is a mobile home community thing, they've been out of their home now for over a month because the county has required an engineer's foundation drawing, which was not given, the public was not giving any notice, the mobile home installers were not giving any notice, and neither were the engineers that do this foundation work. They were given no notice. Nobody was giving any public hearings, nothing was brought forth until we submitted our papers requesting a permit, an applicant, permit application. As it went around the table, the various departments, one department sends us an email and says, "We're going to require you to come up with an engineer's foundation based on the soil test and where this property fall, fall, falls in the FEMA flood map, flood plane." Which is great, you know, the bad part about it is, is we've had a system in effect for the last twenty-something years, and it's based upon the floor height, finished floor height, as that table, finished floor height, so that there's no water gonna come into the home. This requirement's gonna add about three thousand dollars to every single wide, mobile home, cost-wise, it's gonna add about five thousand dollars to every double wide. These people are trying to live in low-income housing. They are required by the county to give them, supply them with a indemnity letter waiving the county of any liability. So if you have that recorded in the courthouse, if you have it recorded downtown where they're at, why in the world, then would you do this to these, or require these same individuals to spend this extra money if he's always, already given you a waiver? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lord. And I throw the elevator with him earlier and ask him to put that in email to us. I know we're not gonna engage, but just so, if you don't mind getting that to us in email, we'll try and respond to you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioner Maddox, you had, you wanna weigh in?
Mr. Chair, I was gonna weigh, I was waiting till you get to general business, when we start general business.
Okay.
If you open up there.
Commissioner Proctor, you had a comment?
Since we can't weigh in, Mr. Maddox is deeply concerned.
Yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather not. If he gets an email to us, then we can deal with it. Thank you. Okay, so we're on to, we have another speaker, or, no, first, first item, and I understand, Herb, you're taking that, Counselor?
Mr. Chair, before we take up the first item, I don't know if you wanna entertain, I know we have a large docket of, of agenda items today. I wanted to ask the Administrator, which items actually have speakers?
Chairman, we have speaker cards on item number twenty-two, this item, number twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-seven.
Mr. Mr. Chair, only with your permission and with your accepting this as a motion, I'm wanting to look at taking staff recommendations on items number twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, and making a motion for staff recommendation on those, if you'll accept. If not, I completely understand.
I have a motion. I tell you what I would do, is I would just ask that as we get to them and after we read them, if there is no speaker card and, and we don't really feel the need to discuss, we just get through it like we do oftentimes at public hearings.
Yes, sir. You're right, yes, sir.
But I, I, I hear you.
All right. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this agenda item is the result of the commission asking the staff to prepare a report, excuse me, on the status of adult retail sales spots in, in Leon County. We have concluded that there are, at the moment, but three, and we went through the report, and I, I'm not gonna repeat everything that's in there, but essentially they are treated with similar respect to adult entertainment facilities, they have First Amendment protections, and so they, they can exist. There are, if you see, there's the map and what zoning categories, a, a business of this variety would be permitted, but they can be regulated. You can do reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions if that is your... You can do reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions, if that is your desire to do so. You can congregate them in one location, you could disperse them. All of those things are possible. We have gave you some examples of how some other jurisdictions have dealt with the issue. And we're just, the report is what it is. The question is, do you wish staff to go further and draft some sort of regulatory ordinance or not? And that's really the question.
Commissioner Maddox, you were up, but I don't know if this was from the prior or...
Yeah, this one, prior one.
Commissioner Minor, you want to weigh in? I think this is your kind of...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you to the county attorney and his staff for preparing the item. I really appreciate it. This agenda item has never been about the moral argument of whether these stores should exist. If someone wants to shop at an adult store, more power to them. I'm not going to judge. It's really about the economic development of Leon County and about protecting the surrounding neighborhoods of these stores and preventing the increased crime and blight that would follow a concentration of these stores in one area. The genesis of this was North Monroe and Husser Hollywood that opened in September along the North Monroe-I-10 interchange, but this would apply to everything in Leon County. And the county attorney has informed me that should the city of Tallahassee not pass something that would conflict with it, it would also apply to within the city limits. So after meeting with the county attorney and talking about our options, what I'd like to do is introduce a motion to ask staff to draft an ordinance that would do a couple different things. One would establish a one-mile distance requirement between adult-oriented businesses. It would have no effect on existing stores. And then the second thing would be establishing a 1,000-feet distance requirement from a church, school, park, residential neighborhood, or daycare center. This, again, would have no effect on existing stores. I think this is a reasonable approach. It would prevent the concentration of these stores along North Monroe and the I-10 interchange, but also throughout Leon County. For me, as I said, this is an economic development issue and protecting our neighborhoods. I think you all heard from one businessperson at our meeting when we discussed this, but I've heard from two businesspeople who has said that they would not have invested in the North Monroe-I-10 area had they known that an adult store would be opening up close to their operations. So I see this as a great way for us to head off potential issues that we might have in the problem. It's much easier for us to address this and prevent it than it is to come in 20 years from now and try to deal with an area that has declined over time and trying to figure out how to remediate that area. So with that, I would like to move for a motion of that effect, basically a one-mile distance requirement between adult stores and a 1,000-foot distance requirement from church, school, park, residential neighborhood, or daycare center. Neither one of those would have any effect on the existing three stores. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? All right, we have a speaker and we have Commissioner Jackson in line. You want to hear this?
I'll be happy to concede to the speaker.
Yeah, why don't we get, let the speaker get up and then we'll continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have one speaker. Thomas Wakefield-Wild.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Field Wildy, 3412 Derbyshire Court. It's good to see everybody again. I'm here to speak on behalf of the other individuals that were at the prior meeting, all the individuals in the city of Tallahassee. My only statement is, absent support for this particular effort is going to result in a detrimental change to the face of the city of Tallahassee that will have long-term and lasting effects on all aspects, politically, financially, and socially. So I'd just like to reiterate and emphasize that the decision that you make tonight will shape and possibly and hopefully ensure that the face of our city will be one that elicits from those who travel to and near, should they pause only for a visit, a sense of comfort and satisfaction, and for those who choose to live in our city, in our community, in our county, a strong sense of pride and a willingness to call it home and advocate on behalf of that to other individuals. I was raised in Huntsville, Alabama, with an extremely forward-looking political enterprise, and the result of that forward, that foresight is a city that's well-respected, that has strong employment, that has a consistent level of immigration, and is thought to be one of the perhaps crown jewels of the Southeast. I'd like for that same persona and character to be true of Tallahassee and Leon County. Thank you.
You are, Commissioner Dozier, and then followed by Commissioner Minor. Oh, Commissioner Jackson.
Sorry. Mr. Attorney, just, is there, I know I recall reading in the, some of the work you had, there's a precedent for 1,000 feet between establishments.
Yes.
That's other municipalities or counties here in Florida?
Yes.
Okay. Rick, or, excuse me, Commissioner Minor, while I can appreciate, I certainly can appreciate the 1,000 feet from church, school, or park being in the business of young people and families every day, I don't, the one-mile distance, I don't know that there's any legal, I didn't notice in the notes on this item, if there's any legal precedent for that one-mile distance. Is there?
Commissioner, no, not that I have found in our research, but I'm not, I'm not saying that you can't do that. I mean, you just have to have a reasonable regulation, and if that one-mile separation distance still allows areas where you could establish such a facility, then I think it would be upheld.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the deep dive into this issue, and I certainly understand and respect the concerns that came up really immediately, right after the store was opened on North Monroe. I wanted to reiterate something I brought up when we first discussed this, that I think efforts along North Monroe to really do some enhancements that we've talked about for a long time, make sure it is an attractive area for other businesses to move in, is really critical. And I'm glad we've gotten an update, both from Blueprints coming up, but also here at the county, on efforts along North Monroe. So I, I think, for me, part of it is areas of town that may lack other types of investments could be attractive to different types of stores like this. I absolutely understand the concerns. I think in reading through the item, and I guess, Mr. County Attorney, I have a question here. It seems like this is a protected speech. You reference First Amendment rights and others, that a one-mile distance between stores doesn't necessarily, from my perspective, eliminate the concern if we were to get other stores in the area. We may not get a cluster, but we could still have a number of these stores, even though we only have three now, and I don't think we've ever seen an explosion in them, but the reasoning, the public purpose for doing this, there have been reference to crime and other things that are associated with these types of stores. I have not seen that come forward in the item or in other data. And what my understanding is, it might be more the proximity to the interchange or other types of lack of development in the area or other populations living in the area. Am I on the right track with that, based on what you've seen?
I've not seen data for us, but I have seen data for other jurisdictions that indicates that that's a draw.
Okay.
Especially based on the configuration of the facility. If parking is in the dark and it's behind where it's visible to the general population, has tended to attract folks who were doing things, drugs transactions, for example. So we can borrow, by the way, the courts have said, "You don't have to do your own study, as long as you can find that those secondary effects exist, and you can borrow a study that, say, a sister county has done," then that could be used as the baseline. The reason the mile is a little, it's an expansion, but the courts have said, "As long as you don't ban them, and as long as you don't make those site distance requirements so onerous that no one could have another facility," then they've tended to defer to the local government, so.
Thank you. I remember well when the county's adult entertainment organs went into effect, it predates me on this board, but I think you rightly say in the item, that really did have an effect on limiting any kind of adult entertainment in our community, and that was a very good thing. This one, Commissioner Minor, I really appreciate the deep dive into it. I'm just not seeing the return on the investment being as beneficial to us at this point. And it is protected speech, whether you like the businesses or not, but I would redouble efforts on North Monroe and other areas of town to make sure that we have opportunities for other types of businesses and really think about the adverse impacts if we see others come up. Thank you.
Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to have some other comments here. Commissioner Dozier talked about the ROI for this. I recognize that, and listen, I respect the opinions of everyone here at the platform, but there's no, there's not much investment here, there's not much cost. It's simply putting in a regulation that would protect our neighborhoods and prevent the increase of crime. You know, we, the county attorney talked about the First Amendment rights, and I've studied this. Yes, the First Amendment protects the existence of these types of businesses. It's a legal business. The businesses that currently exist here, so long as they continue to obey the law, there's nothing that the county commission or the city commission can do about them. That's the law. They're protected. However, the Supreme Court allows for what they call secondary effects, which is when a community can present evidence to show that a concentration of these types of businesses are detrimental to the community. We didn't include secondary effects evidence in this agenda item, but I imagine it would appear in a future draft ordinance coming to us. Supreme Court has said that a community does not have to rely on its own evidence of secondary effects to justify what it decides to do. It can take a look at secondary effects from other communities that have gone through this type of thing on their own. In fact, that Supreme Court case relied on another community's secondary effects evidence to justify that, and that was upheld by the Supreme Court. So, we talk a lot about crime. We just had the sheriff talk about all-in. This is something with very little cost, zero cost financially for us, has the opportunity for us to protect our neighborhoods, address the concerns of residents from what you heard a couple months ago, and as secondary effects have proven in other communities, it does prevent against increased crime, increased activity that we do not want, and it also helps us with our economic development efforts. Yes, just like you, Commissioner Dozier, I want to double down on North Monroe. I want to double down on a whole host of areas in Leon County and promote great economic activity. I don't want something working against us at the same time, and that's what this agenda item is for. So I hope that the board here will consider having a second for it and voting in favor of it. No, zero cost for us, but does a lot to protect our neighborhoods, our residents, and protection against crime, and promotes greater economic development. Thank you.
Commissioner Lindley.
Thank you. You know, I was thinking, I think at least one of these has been around probably 15 or 20 years, and I think you might want to take a look at this again. I'm not going to support your motion, but in a year or two, and see if there is any increase in crime or any adverse effects beyond some people, you know, being offended by it. I understand that. But, you know, in this day and age, brick-and-mortar stores selling any product are probably going to have some stiff competition on Amazon in terms of just the sale of adult items. I just don't think we're there to a place where we have to worry about it. We have none of it in the unincorporated area. We have an adult entertainment ordinance regarding nudity and semi-nudity in places that sell alcohol. I just think we are kind of reaching out for trouble right now that we really aren't experiencing, and it may be in other communities, but I don't see it here, and I just feel like we're stepping up prematurely to do some zoning that, to me, just doesn't make sense at this time. I appreciate your interest. Take another look at it in a year or two.
Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll point to what Commissioner Lindley said. I want to make a motion for option number one, which is accept the status report. But to add to that, because I think you bring up a very valid point in the status report or checkup in a couple of years, then in a couple of years, maybe we have a status report, what would we call it? Not progress, what would we use it called? A progress report, status report on crime statistics in the area compared to what they are right now.
So the motion is, if I understand, and Commissioner Dozier seconded it, was basically option one, which is accept the report with the idea that we revisit this at a time certain, which is a year, two years?
Say, two years. Status report in two years, to see, to review crime statistics in the area compared to what they are right now, to make sure there's not an increase in crime in the area. If so, then we can entertain at that time. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Proctor.
Mr. Chair, if one county attorney could share with us the number of arrests and police reports associated with these three stores, what evidence is there that they generate crime, disorderly conduct? What information can you share with us?
We did no background investigation on these three existing facilities.
I see.
We would do so before, if an ordinance was to be drafted, oh, yes, I would try to get that from the Tallahassee Police Department or the Sheriff's Office, but this was more to lay out the methodology, not the specifics.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll weigh in real quick. Frankly, I would support this most, Rick's original motion. Frankly, I think we regulate liquor stores, we regulate churches, we regulate schools. I mean, there's a bunch of different things as leadership. I'm fine with us taking a pause and bringing it back sooner rather than later, would be my personal opinion. I was in New Orleans just a couple weeks ago, and, you know, if you walk down the street there, it's hard not to be kind of, you know, and listen, I live in a glass house, I'm not throwing stones, but, and I'm certainly the most pro-business person, you know, that you'll ever hear, and I'm not a regulatory kind of guy, but this is one of those things that I think people look to us to lead on, so I would...
Mr. Chair, I would entertain, if you want to change the time certain to review, I would entertain in a...
A year?
Whatever you...
I'd say six months to a year. How about that? Six months, but within a year. How about that?
Okay. One year is fine.
Can we live with that? Yeah, I agree, because then, and we can wrap it back into what Sheriff McNeil said as far as some of the reports and how we're doing, but I think it's appropriate, and I can read the tea leaves, it's not going to go...
I'll set an amendment on you.
Within a year. Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second, all, yes, sir. Commissioner Proctor.
I know I'm a little bit ignorant, because this is up on North Monroe and not in my district. We, I wish we had some bookstores in my district, but we have the real live and living in color. We got the real thing in my district. We don't have no stores like this right here. So that would be a relief, but I think that's what, you know, in terms of setback and greater concern to me, would be like, what's the chicken place? Chick-fil-A? I mean, there's some regulation needed, because, you know, somebody going to get killed trying to get in, out, around Chick-fil-A's. You can't pass around, there's always a fender bender, and these three stores ain't half the, don't even raise half the threat to the public safety and health as all the cars always around Chick-fil-A. That's what we need to look at.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. I'm not sure I compare adult stores to Chick-fil-A, but Commissioner Minor...
They didn't got no line. There ain't no line wrapped around these stores. But Chick-fil-A...
I think I can see where this is going. Commissioner Proctor, if you want to, if you want some adult stores in your area, I think after this motion passes, you can have a concentration of those stores in your area if you want, so. But I see where this is going. I'm going to vote against the motion, but I respect the will of the body of the Commission and look forward to this coming up again in six to, six months to a year.
All right. Within a year, yeah. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Aye. All right, six, one. Motion carries. All right, let's pick it up here. We're on 23. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 23 provides an overview of Leon County's ordinance related to recreational burning, as well as similar ordinances, similar ordinances that have been adopted in other Florida jurisdictions. Commissioners, as described in the item, our ordinance follows all state regulations for outdoor burning, and as you know, it allows for outdoor recreational fires with specific rules for size and setbacks. It provides for items that are prohibited to burn, like those which produce dark or noxious smoke, and it is enforced by TFD. We point out, Commissioners, that some Florida counties go further and have adopted nuisance ordinances that provide for additional regulations. However, in the end, Commissioners, and in summary, our analysis indicates that we have a very strong ordinance relative to regulations that are in place and responsive enforcement. However, if the board does wish to go further, we have a few examples for your consideration.
Move option one, Mr. Chairman.
And I have three speaker cards. And I have three speaker cards on this item.
We have three speaker cards. We have a motion in a second, but let's go ahead and listen to speakers.
Great. First Speaker, Elizabeth Ralston.
My name's Elizabeth Ralston. I live at 1282 Turkey Roost Knoll, and I've lived in the subdivision of many farms in eastern Leon County since 2005. A couple of years ago, I noticed feeling a physical irritation as if I were down, went to smoke when attending a neighborhood bonfire event. Earlier this year, I found myself trapped in a horse pasture and unable to avoid inhaling smoke, which prompted me to find out why I was having such severe reactions. After thorough allergy and asthma testing, I was diagnosed with reactive airway dysfunction syndrome called RADs or irritant asthma. This was further confirmed by my pulmonologist in the spring of this year. When I'm exposed to smoke from a fire within approximately 1,000 feet, I have a severe reaction. My windpipe constricts, I've passed out during these episodes. Inhalers only have a limited effect because the windpipe is so constricted, and due to repeated exposure, scar tissue is built up, making each episode more traumatic than the previous. I also have a gag reflex, and then I vomit while I'm gasping for air. I have to notify my superiors at work that I'm not sick, just experiencing the side effects of smoke exposure, like what I sound like today. This is what my voice has now changed to. I'm not sure if you've ever been in a situation where you absolutely couldn't breathe, but I will tell you, it is terrifying. We have neighbors that like to burn, and we've notified them of my condition and even attempted, many attempts to work out an arrangement whereby they could notify us that they are going to burn. Even though they have acknowledged the awareness to RADs, one of them is a surgical nurse. They have discounted it. They claim that their concerns are ridiculous and stated that they will not change their lifestyle because of our bad decisions. Due to this situation, we politely asked them to please extinguish their fire when the smoke is enveloping our 10-acre property, but this has been dismissed or ignored. We've installed a pollutant monitor to provide objective data regarding the level of pollutants that are affecting our health and also the health of our animals. We've contacted multiple law enforcement offices with the goal to find out what options exist for protection under the law. Unfortunately, we've provided a multitude of misinformation from every agency that actually responded. In June, we discovered that there's a loophole in Leon County ordinances. There's nothing that can be done to protect me from smoke emitted from their fire on a daily basis now because it's classified as recreational. This has been very discouraging. Each time I approach Turkey Roost Road, my blood pressure increases. I don't want to go home. I don't feel safe. We just finished construction on our home in our barn, which was laid out more differently than our different previous residents next door, so that we could affordably care for our animals at home and enjoy riding and playing with them outside. However, due to the increase in frequency and levels of smoke coming onto our property, unable to take the chance to do this and actually avoid coming home until just before bedtime, I'm not being able to enjoy my property or the lifestyle that has been a part of who I am for over 48 years because of the actions of others. I'm asking that you choose option number three, as you've outlined. Update the recreational burn ordinance to include language that other counties around the state use to allow the fire pit or food cooking as recreational burning so long as the excessive smoke and/or nuisance is not created. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Jay Ralston.
Name and address for that.
My name is Jay Ralston. I'm at 1282 Turkey Roost Knoll's Will. I'm Elizabeth's husband. Keeping up our home, as many of you might know, keeping animals is a full-time job. It's a passion of ours, but it does take both of us, and I miss my wife. The smoke situation that's been described has been extremely stressful. Most evenings, she doesn't come home. She stays at the gym late. We get very little time to spend with one another. I feed the animals, mow and care for the land. I have performed most of the outdoor maintenance because the smoke on our property occurs every night unless we're lucky enough to have a prevailing northern wind. I do this in addition to my full-time job, so I'm concerned with her health as well due to the stress, and she also vomits and has nausea, and so she has a very limited appetite. She's lost nearly 30 pounds in the last three months. Her spirits are crushed. Home life is no longer a place to relax or recharge. When we realized the neighbors had no interest in being reasonable about negotiating a burning schedule, and to the contrary, they took offense to the suggestion, we went to the Florida Forestry Service. And initially, the Forestry Service indicated that they could, we could get a letter from Elizabeth's doctor, and that then they could enforce some restrictions. So, that was what they thought they could do. However, after visits at their site and after a long time, they determined that there was nothing illegal about their activity, which just encouraged the neighbors even that much more to continue and up their burning. So, we heard about others that have had success with the fire department chief, unable to enforce restrictions due to medical need, but based on my recent correspondence with Chief Jerome Gaines with the Tallahassee Fire Department, this current, this option is not really available in Leon County ordinance nor state Florida regulations. We did some research ourself, as did yourself, and there are many counties that do impose additional needed restrictions to protect citizens from nuisance smoke. At the very least, they have provisions that allow for regulatory agencies to enforce restrictions to burning activity in order to protect the health of those impacted by uncontrolled consequence smoke. I've shared with each of you earlier that I understand the need to burn yard debris. I have 10 acres, so I burn every three or four months when I cut tree limbs. Understand also the moral responsibility to be respectful to the needs of my neighbors that could be impacted from the smoke from these fires. However, it's been evident that not everyone shares this viewpoint and this responsibility. So, when we initially discussed this situation with other citizens, law enforcement, Florida Forestry, and even your offices here at the commission, the assumption has been that there must be something in the Florida statutes or Leon County ordinance that protects someone with respiratory conditions from nuisance smoke, but there isn't. And so, to fill that gap, we're asking that you do look at option three to provide us some additional protections. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ralston. Next speaker.
Your final speaker on this item is Kara Fleischer.
Name and address for the record, Ms. Fleischer.
Good afternoon. I'm Kara Fleischer at 4706 Inisher Court. I'm the Leon Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor, and I am very concerned about the excess smoke that our county residents are having to deal with. It is very dangerous for children and the elderly in particular, and my children actually both have asthma. We left Atlanta because of the smog there to move back home to Tallahassee, only to realize in our area in northeast Tallahassee, there was burning consistently in the spring and the fall, which would cause asthma attacks for my children. We got a personal air monitor called a purple air monitor, and anytime we saw smoke, we checked the monitor. And we have the data that shows that on those days, the air is unhealthy to breathe with readings from 150 to 250 PM 2.5, or code red to code purple breathing alerts, which states by the government's readings that everyone may experience serious health threats if exposed. We try to keep the children inside during these conditions, but sometimes they'll be at school, and there will be playground time and athletics going on. We're concerned that this smoke endangers us all, but it especially impacts children because they breathe faster, and the 2016 Leon County health assessments showed that African-Americans in Leon County were twice as likely to be hospitalized for asthma. We also, now that we all have these great phones that have weather apps, we've been getting alerts through our weather apps that say that Tallahassee is having dangerous air, and there is conversations all over Facebook in mothers groups about what that means. We also are a very beautiful city with lots of people who love to run and bike and hike, and I have been getting feedback from many of those groups saying that this is impacting their activities because they're not able to do what they'd like to do because of the smoke. The county did a great job after the hurricane with a curb it, don't burn it campaign, and I was very happy to see that they were encouraging people not to burn their yard waste during that time. It would be wonderful if we could do more of that in encouraging people not to burn their yard waste. So, I believe that a reasonable way to move forward would be to advise the staff to work with our concerned citizens to update these recreational burn ordinances and include the language that the other counties around the state are using to allow fire pit or food cooking as recreational burning so long as excessive smoke and a nuisance is not created. That would fall in line with the option number three that has been put before you, and I just want you to know that I appreciate you taking a deep, close look at this for the health of our children and our residents in Leon County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fleischer. We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Dozier and then Commissioner Lindley, like to weigh in.
Mr. Chair, we had a motion for option one.
Yes.
Is that right? Okay. I have spent some time talking with Ralstons and with Cars, and thank you all for being here today, and I struggle with this one for two reasons. One, because while I don't have asthma, I do have a chemical sensitivity, and I think things like asthma, chemical sensitivity, if people are burning trash and things like that, it's kind of one of those undetected health issues. It's not obvious to a lot of people, and it may be downplayed at times. And so, I do think it is something we need to take seriously. We have taken steps to do that in the past when we revised the burn ordinance. On the other hand, and it's not lost on me, that our next item deals with a request for controlled burn at Lake Lafayette. There are times for burning to help our ecosystem prevent wildfires and other things like that, and as Ms. Ralston said, you know, you've said all along, you burn on your property as well, and we've talked about that. I am also aware of reports in the past that we may have particularly bad air quality at times, not from anything that happens in our region, but from what's coming to us from our western neighbors, as far away as Louisiana in past reports, and all the factories and everything, which just happen to be in an area that catches a lot of those toxins. So, I think this is an important issue to address. I'm not sure if the recreational burn ordinance going as far as option three is workable in an enforcement. When we get into words like annoying, I fear that it's not as directly related to legitimate health concerns as one neighbor not liking what another neighbor's doing, and that is a very subjective and difficult position to put the fire department, put others in. So, Ms. County Administrator or Ms. County Attorney, I'm not sure who to direct this to. Option two with the smoke chart that is used by the federal government and I think in Pinellas and Palm Beach, would that provision, the nuisance smoke, would that give us any ability to enforce, to add enforcement if there were, if there was smoke that was really intruding on another person's property due to weather or whatever, someone was burning? And is there any provision for health concerns that may allow us to enforce that a little bit more?
Ms. Chairman, Commissioner Dozier, most of our research indicates that in those couple of counties that are using that Wrinkleman scale, that it's, they enforce that mostly when people are burning things that tend to produce dark or noxious smoke. Treated wood in particular is a problem down that part of the state, as well as some other things you could imagine, tires, et cetera, that produce it. That's just their experience and when they tend to use that the most. Of course, this probably, some of the conditions that we've talked about may not lend themselves as well to that type of objective criteria, but that is one option that's available.
Did Chief Gaines or anyone else, city or county, have any comments about the health issues that may be unique to certain individuals, but honestly, a growing number of people in our community? Did that come? I didn't see that specifically addressed.
The only response we got back from TFD, and we engaged them pretty thoroughly on this item, was that they viewed the number and frequency of smoke calls in our community to enforce as relatively few, and in the case that you just heard of, they were of the opinion that even going further with these nuisance provisions wouldn't address those issues.
Thank you. Well, at this time, Mr. Chair, I'm interested in at least seeing an ordinance developed using the nuisance smoke and getting any additional information from TFD or other state or local partners dealing with the health concerns, just so we can see if there is a way to at least give some recourse for people who may be in a really dire strait where they can't use their property on certain days. And with that, I'll make a motion for option two to further consider and dig into this issue. Substitute motion, yes.
We have a substitute motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Okay. Commissioner Lindley.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I've been concerned about this too. I've heard from the Ralstons quite a bit, and I understand it's very serious, and they have an obnoxious neighbor, it sounds to me like, who's not willing to even consider the health effects, and that goes on all over the community from time to time. My concern with a nuisance ordinance is just how it would be enforced. It would be extremely subjective to say what is a nuisance, what is truly a nuisance, and what is sort of a nuisance. According to the way our local government has established, this would be coming under the, enforcement would be coming under the Tallahassee Fire Department. Right now, I under, I mean, the dilemma is rough. The Florida Forest Service weighs in to some extent, the Tallahassee Fire Department to another. I just think the subjective nature of a nuisance ordinance is not going to solve this problem. I'm not sure what is. I don't really object to trying to dig in a little bit more, see what other communities may be doing. I'd originally seconded the option one. I don't object to an idea, I might, you know, withdraw that and go with your substitute motion to see if there's anything else we could do. I just feel like we may be offering false hope that an ordinance of some type might actually do anything to rectify human behavior when it comes to, you know, recreational burning without concerns for neighbors, and I think that sort of thing's going to go on with or without our ordinance.
Thank you.
So, I would support your.
Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really struggled with this one. You know, I met with Mr. Ralston, didn't get a chance to meet with Ms. Ralston, but the main concern for this case, for this specific case, is just the sustained burning, day after day after day. So, I definitely support Commissioner Dozier's substitute motion, and as well as your elaboration on not just simply being a Wrinkleman smoke chart, but trying to find other ways that other communities have been able to try to deal with this, right? There's got to be something that we can do so that we don't have Ms. Ralston and others like her that are basically prisoners inside their home on days like this. So, I support the motion, and we'll vote for it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Commissioner Lindley articulated my bit of a concern in that I hate to create false hope. What I want to see when I come, when we come back with an ordinance, Mr. Attorney, is that what we have in the ordinance actually is not false hope, it's something that can actually do something about what these folks are experiencing. If not, I'm not sure I can support putting an ordinance in place to fix a problem that doesn't fix the problem, if that makes any sense. So, I'm wanting, you know, I'm willing to give it a chance. I was willing to, I was squarely here to date, to support option number one, but I'll walk with you guys on it, but I tell you, if it's not something that comes back that actually rectifies the problem, then I won't be able to get there when the ordinance comes back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I just had a question.
Yeah, Commissioner Lindley.
I mean, we might be able to just try to do a little bit better. I love the curb it, don't burn it effort that we made. Kara, thank you wherever you are. And maybe we could sort of up the ante and try to do a little bit more promotional work on that. That doesn't address the specific problem that you all have, but I think with others, it might. it might, you know, kind of be useful. So that might be something our, you know, our team could look into, trying to do a little bit more publicizing and encouraging, educating on that front.
Commissioner Dozier, you want to weigh back in?
I really appreciate the conversation and the caution. I think one of the things I appreciate about this board and our conversation is we want to do things that actually make an impact, and we know we can't solve every problem in the world. So that is something I value. I think this just deserves a little bit more study, but it's, my concern is exactly why I didn't go for Option 3, because I think words like annoying get too subjective and too hard to enforce. I did want to make one last comment that we did, or I brought this up, I think, after Hurricane Michael, because if we have a hurricane in the fall when we're without power for several days, we actually heard from more people during that time who had problems because everyone had their windows open. So I think, I just wanted to piggyback on Commissioner Lindley's comment that a public information campaign, curb it, not burn it, things like that can really be beneficial, particularly at times when we may see more burning and we're without power. So there are other alternatives, and I want to do what we can, but this would just be, allow us to take the next step, review that information, and see whether or not it will actually help our community.
Thank you. Good conversation. The comment was made earlier, have any of you struggled to breathe? I can tell you, I had childhood asthma. I can remember the times on the side of the football field, playing touch football, just gasping for air. I've been to 20,000 feet where the air is very thin. I got hella backed off a mountain in Argentina with pulmonary edema about six years ago. Yeah, I get that whole thing, but I struggle with, I don't know that we're going to solve the problem. And again, I don't feel, I feel like we're giving a little bit of false hope. I'm willing to go down this path. I'm not, I originally thought that, you know, it doesn't help anything. I would like to see that, though, if we don't see that it's getting where it just creates more burden for us, that I would, we'd take it back, because I just, I don't want to give the Ralstons the idea that somehow it's going to solve it. I would ask, Counselor, is there a way outside of us, from a regulatory standpoint, from a legal standpoint, that they have any potential action?
If I was them, and it's just based upon the facts that they have stated and what's been in the agenda, I believe they have a cause of action for private nuisance abatement that you could run with. I mean, we only can regulate public nuisances, but individual property owners can bring private nuisance abatement actions, and it covers the whole gamut, not just smoke, it's noise, it's all of those sorts of things. That's a viable option. I mean, yes, I understand that you'll have to hire a lawyer, and you're going to have to pay the lawyer, but that's available at least as an option.
Based on that, yeah, Commissioner Maddox.
That kind of changes the game for me. Mr. Attorney, is this, so in essence, what you're saying, this is a private, I don't know if I want to say incident, but this is a private issue that could be settled in a private nature. So what we, what you're saying is what we do is what we put in place is more of a public thing that will cover everything. But there is recourse here, but it's recourse in the courtroom in the private nature versus the public, correct?
Yes.
So there are things out there to protect people against what's happening in this instance, correct?
Yes.
That kind of changes things for me. I mean, if there's something, if there's some recourse privately out there, what we're trying to do is create something publicly that could help with this instance that already has a protection that is in place for it privately, I don't, I see this as a bit repetitive. Am I missing something, Mr. Attorney? Did I explain it correctly?
Yes.
Are you 100% sure behind the pretense of what you're saying to me right now? Is there anything that I could be missing, anything that, any loopholes there?
You're going to have to prove the nuisance aspect of it, but it sounds to me, if somebody is, at least, this is not an accidental thing. It's someone's starting a fire that burns yard waste, and the smoke is going to a direction that seems to be always to the same neighbor's house. I think you can do that. I mean, I'm, we can't do this on their behalf because that's not what we do, but I think they should at least, between now and the time we bring back a draft ordinance, auto explore, going to see a person, a lawyer who could do that, not a litigator, North Florida Legal Services, I mean, one of those folks, you know, all the money that they're getting for the favorite dancer is going to be helpful to them to look at the issue.
You're talking about Ms. Tango over here?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, it seems like a kind of a cart before the horse type thing. I mean, I'm now not comfortable moving forward with the motion that we have in place until they have gone through the process of looking at the private side of this to see if they have some kind of recourse. If they were to come back and say there's no recourse privately for us here, then I see exactly where we need to go with this. But right now, I'm not comfortable moving forward without them having some kind of answer to what they've done to look at private recourse for the actions that are taking place.
I tend to agree. Commissioner Jackson.
No, the attorney answers.
Okay.
My question.
So we have a substitute motion, and I tend to agree with Commissioner Maddox, which is, it might be a little bit overreached for us at this point, and you have a substitute motion. No, so, oh, we got to vote on your substitute motion, up or down, and then we go back to the original motion. So I'm just saying, I can't support substitute motion based on what the attorney's saying. So let's go and vote. What do you, Commissioner Lindley?
All right. Well, except the substitute motion really isn't just to address the Ralston's problem.
It's the whole county. That's my problem, and it, we.
Well, I know, but.
It's not, and it's not, I tend to believe it's not going to address it. I agree.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
There could be nuisance smoke from a controlled burn, from other types of burning. I understand that. There could be people who can't afford a lawyer. And to our county attorney's generous comment, what we're raising money for is to provide people with access to civil attorneys who can't afford them. So I do not think that is a viable option for everyone, nor do I think we should be encouraging litigation if there's something else we can do. I respect everyone else's comments on this. If we don't want to move forward, that's fine. I'm going to stand with the substitute motion. I just felt like that was, I don't want to get too tied to one specific example here and that the courts are the best option for everyone.
Okay. We have substitute motion. Any other discussion? All in favor of the substitute motion as it stands, which is Option 2, as I understand? All signify by saying aye. All opposed? Signify? Aye. So we've got.
Fails 2-4.
Fails 2 to 4. Okay. So back then, we revert to the original motion.
Yes, sir.
Which was Option 1, which was made by.
Let Mr. Chair make a motion. Well, actually, it was made by Commissioner Proctor, I believe, seconded by Commissioner Lindley.
Why don't we get somebody to make.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion with Option 1. Those folks are understanding, they are more than willing to come back.
Come back.
To us, to, for us to readdress if there's no private recourse. That's my motion.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? I would say let's break now, be back at 6 for a public hearing, but we have a, what do you have, Commissioner Dozier?
Your discretion, Mr. Chair. I just thought the next issue might go quickly tied in, but your discretion, Mr. Chair.
I think we're going to, at the rate we're moving, I worry that we're going to be buying it down, and so.
[inaudible].
Dinner break, back at 6. Thank you.